This is the regular meeting of the Mobile City Council Wednesday, October 9. Please stand for the invocation led by Pastor Tony Legere, Public Safety. For a pledgeable, for the pledgeable agents and a moment of silence following.
I appreciate when she announced me from Public Safety Chaplain, but I always like to say, I am happy to say hello from the strong and resolute Mobile Police Department. Good morning to you. Let's pray. Father, we thank you for a good day that you've made, and we gather as friends. We thank you for the stewardship that we have, Lord of this great city. Our prayer is to this city, we will make decisions in our behalf. We pray that you give them clarity, and most of all, may they be led by your Spirit. We welcome you here in Christ's name. Amen. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to ask everyone to please remain standing for a moment of silence for the victims of this past hurricane that we have and also the present hurricane that we have coming towards those residents. As Councilman Reynolds had mentioned last week, how, you know, we need to make precautions of making sure that we have flood insurance, but many people are still suffering from this last hurricane and for another hurricane to be heading towards Florida. Let's just have a moment of silence, please.
President Small.
Here.
Vice President Gregory.
Here.
Councilmember Penn.
Here.
Councilmember Carroll.
Here.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Here.
Councilmember Daves.
Councilmember Woods.
Here.
Statement of rules.
And good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Welcome to our Wednesday, October 9 meeting. And at this meeting, we do have rules at this time. I ask if anyone have any type of electronic devices, including cell phones, please at this time put on the off the vibrate position, the off of the vibrate position. Any person that is desiring to address the Mobile City Council must sign in indicating the ordinance, the resolution, a public hearing agenda item before entering the meeting. When addressing the council, the speaker must give his or her name. Any person that is desiring to speak to the council on a non-agenda item must contact the city clerk office no later than 2:00 PM the third prior to the council meeting. The subject that he or she wishes to express to the Mobile City Council must be identified and pertain to the city of Mobile business. Anyone who has not given a proper notice to the city clerk office and wishes to speak on a non-agenda item would not be allowed to address the council. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the council. A bell was signed to indicate the end of two minutes. One minute remained for summarizing. Second bell indicates that your time has expired. When addressing the council, there should be no personal address to any individual council members. All statements are to be made to the chair. To maintain decorum, there shall be no undue applause and/or public outcry allowed. Madam Clerk?
Approval of minutes of October 1st.
So moved. Second.
Properly moved and seconded in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Disapproved.
Communications from Mayor Stimson.
Good morning. Good to see you today. Thanks for being here. I have two proclamations and then a few announcements. The first one proclamation has to do with Blindness Awareness Month, and we have some attendees, Barbara Manuel, Manuel, Tamika Williams, Constance Hughes, and Tiffany Moore. I think they're sitting in the second row right to my right, okay? I don't know if any of them are able to approach the podium or if you'd just like to stand in place. If you're... Lisa, can you give them a hand? And the proclamation reads, whereas the National Federation of the Blind, Mobile, Alabama Chapter, has tirelessly championed the cause of inclusivity and equality for individuals with visual impairments, and whereas their exemplary efforts have culminated in the organization of breaking down barriers, resource fair, a beacon of hope and empowerment for the visually impaired community, and whereas the commendable initiative seeks to address multifaceted challenges faced by individuals with visual impairments, including but not limited to employment disparities, literacy hurdles, transportation limitations, and technological accessibility barriers. Now therefore, I, William S. Stimson, the 108th Mayor of the City of Mobile, do hereby proclaim a profound gratitude and admiration for the National Federation of the Blind, Mobile, Alabama Chapter, for their unwavering commitment to breaking down barriers and fostering a more inclusive and accessible community for all. I urge all citizens to join me in recognizing the invaluable contributions of the National Federation of the Blind and to actively support the endeavors to create a more equitable and inclusive society done at the City of Mobile this ninth day of October 2024. Congratulations and thank you very, very much.
All right. So, thank you so much for the proclamation. Thank you for acknowledging the National Federation of the Blind and the efforts that we strive to make within the blindness community. This month, the month of October, is observed in the National Federation of the Blind, of Blind Equality Achievement Month, and so we are here to shatter misconceptions and raise expectations of the blind community. Also federally, this month, on October the 15th, is known as White Kane Awareness Day. So we are here to, to make the public aware of and how it serves its purpose. We are so thankful to be able to partner with the Community Affairs to hold our resource fair, so we invite you guys to come out, visit the vendors, learn more about the agencies that serve the blind community. And to the city council, the mayor, we invite you guys to come by our lunch and learn and hear from Dunn Rose, who is the ADA Coordinator for the City of Mobile. Again, thank you so much for this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you all. Congratulations again.
Thank you so much for coming. So while they're working their way out, I'd ask Chief Johnny Morris, Deputy Chief Penn, District Chief Harris, and Captain Smith, please approach the podium for the next proclamation This is Fire Prevention Week, and so I have a couple announcements. It's not Prevention Week, but also to give you an update on some of the activities. So we'll have the proclamation first. We'll talk about some activities that are going on this Friday, and then I want to bring you up to date on one of our search and rescue, some of the members of the department who are part of a search and rescue team that have already been deployed to Florida. And the proclamation reads, whereas the City of Mobile is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our city, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at the greatest risk of a fire, and whereas home fires kill more than 2,700 people in the United States in 2022, according to the National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States responded to 360,000 home fires, and whereas roughly three out of five fire deaths happen in homes with either no smoke alarms or with no working smoke alarms, and whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires almost in half, and residents should test their smoke alarms at least once a month, and whereas Mobile Fire Rescue Department offers smoke alarm installations and fire safety inspections at no cost to our residents, and whereas the City of Mobile's first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention. Now therefore, I, William S. Stimson, the 108th Mayor of the City of Mobile, do hereby officially proclaim October 6 through 12, 2024, as Fire Prevention Awareness Week in the City of Mobile. Thank you, Chiefs and Captain, for all that you and the department do. Congratulations.
Want to thank the mayor administration, thank the council for this proclamation. Mobile Fire Rescue Department has a community risk reduction program. We have a team. We do this year round. Deputy Chief Penn has oversight along with Chief Harris behind me as the fire marshal. This is one everybody gets mad with. But the quarterback and the one that hits the ground, that does all our speaking, our public relations, our public educations in schools and communities, and you guys probably seen him out doing a wonderful job, is the quarterback and the main man of our team, Captain Smith. He's, he, he does this statewide. I get calls all the time from fire chiefs statewide, regionwide, to borrow him for their different initiatives. He's a very good speaker. He's been in public education, in public fire prevention for a long time now, and he's, he's the captain of our team. So I just want to thank you. Again, I'm the one still in the mayor's thunder, but to culminate this event, we're going to have a fire expo on Friday, and I'm sure...
Did you go ahead and tell what you're going to do at the fire expo?
Fire Expo, this is where we, we partner with different community leaders, with different entities, especially Mobile County Public School System, and we bring the kids out, we bring the public to talk and train and how fun it is for fire prevention, as well as different techniques that the fire department does. We have fire trucks out there, we have tech rescue out there, we burn a building. This is what the community finds out what Mobile Fire Rescue does. We'll have refreshments, we'll do it at Langham Park from 9:00 to 1:00, and it's a big affair, big affair. We're expecting the whole community, Mobile to come out, where we put ourselves on display.
Mr. President.
Vice President.
What are the ages of the youngsters that come? How old are, I know they're elementary school age, right? But what are the...
It's elementary ages to high school.
Oh, it is elementary to high school.
All-inclusive.
The last time that I was there, it was massive.
It is. It's a big undertaking. We, we do the expo annually when things of COVID kind of hit us back, but we do that. And also, Captain Smith also heads up a program that we love, and it, it's Fire Prevention every year, Smoke Detector Giveaways. We have, we call them Smoke Detector Blitzes. We try to do them every quarter. We go out into neighborhoods and we give away smoke detectors. We do installations, we do home inspections for fire evacuation routes. It's a big program, and all the fire department helps with the fire trucks. We hit neighborhoods, we try to hit every district, but we... Fire damage, the most fires. And so we're trying to clean it up because we want us to be a safe city.
Well, I sure appreciate everything you do. I have tagged along on the smoke detector fire alarm detail before and been out to your expo, and thank you for the invitation to come again on Friday. I will be there, so I just look forward to it. Thank you all for everything that you're doing, especially what's going on now with the help with the hurricane issues down in South Florida.
We have a part of the USAR Region Team 1, and we got 25 members going. This is your third time going. The City of Mobile is still in good shape. We make sure that we take care of home first, but we do send help because our guys, we want to help.
Exactly. Thank you.
Mr. President. Councilman.
Chief, I don't know for sure if I'm going to be able to do Friday. I, I want to be here, but you may change my mind. On the building that y'all setting on fire, of mine, man, to put on that fire coat and run in there. So I, I, my personal request would be, could I please have a hat, a mask, a tank, and a coat? Y'all let me run into a building this...
We have this thing what we do, and for you, Councilman, we'll do it for you. We have a waiver that you have to sign. And if you could sign that waiver saying if anything happens to you personally or physically or psychologically, it's not our fault, you sign it and we'll put you in there.
I, I would say, please get it ready.
But we'll have it in triplicate. Yes, sir.
Well, thank you. I, I think I'm going to be here Friday.
Hey, we gonna, we gonna, it's gonna be a blast. We enjoy doing it.
Well, I appreciate all you guys, man. I, I don't think I've met you personally, but the rest of you, I've known for quite a long time. This, this guy over here to the right used to tape my ankles when I was playing football years ago, and I'm just amazed to see how far he's come in the police department. That guy behind you, oh...
Chief Harris as the fire marshal?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. My mouth was on 100,000 times, but I, I just can't tell you how many times he's either bandaged me up or, or sewed me up or did something when I was playing football back in high school, and, and this guy behind you is a tremendous guy too, I've known a while, so it's good to, to see what we're doing in the, in the, in the public with our fire department and our educational process. Be great if we, can you hold the hose too while you're out there on Friday? Thank you, guys.
Yeah, I'd like to also say congratulations and keep making great strides here in the City of Mobile and keep being an example, you know, just not just here locally, but statewide and nationwide. Thank y'all so much for what you all do. Thank you so much.
I'll meet y'all out there in just a couple minutes, but I did want to make another couple of comments. One has to do with this expo. Citizens, I think, would be surprised at the number of opportunities that the mayor has to meet, either the firefighter of the month or the police officer of the month. And you'd be surprised at the number of times they would say, I've wanted to be a fireman or a policeman since I was a child. And so the expo is an opportunity for parents to expose their children, you know, to what it means to be a firefighter or a policeman. And so help spread the word. I mean, this is an opportunity because the better the talent, the greater the passion of our firefighters and policemen, the safer our city will be. So we can play a part in pushing that, so please keep that in mind. Another thing while y'all, while you're still standing there, as he mentioned, the USAR team, and USAR is the Urban Search and Rescue Team, is Urban Search and Rescue Team 1 for this district. Are the 80 members, 25 of them are from Mobile, and as he said, they have been deployed already. They're down in Lavo, Florida, staged, they're just staged, you know, getting ready to go in afterwards, and they take with them, you know, boats, four-wheelers, they've got all kinds of technical equipment with them, K-9 dogs, swift water trans, I mean, of rescue. So this team is highly trained, very motivated, and I think there'll be a great sense of pride from the City of Mobile to realize that, that some of our best are down there trying to assist those with the greatest need. So thank you, Chief, for what y'all do to make sure they're trained and ready to go. So I just wanted the citizens to be down there, but also to be down there right now. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. President.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, I don't know if, obviously, I know that the guys and the ladies that, that are on that task force are well taken care of, but I have had, maybe for future, have had some residents reach out asking if there's a way that they could donate to, to help our team as they come down. I, I don't know if that's something that maybe for the future that we can look into, but several residents reached out just wanting to, wanting to play a little part in trying to help our team. Just wanted to put that out there.
I, I don't know the answer to that, but we'll get you one, okay? So thank y'all very much. So I have a couple, y'all can have a seat, or I'll meet you outside. Just a couple more things. It's the Family Fun Day at the Maritime Museum, the National Maritime Museum, which we also know as Gulf Quest. Family Fun Day is October 19th. It's free admission from 10:00 to 4:00. There'll be food trucks, music, and more. Grand opening in the museum's new restaurant called the Fresh Fruit Cafe, so I hope you can make it to the National Maritime Museum. My last announcement has to do with a, a book that has just been published. It's about Mobile and Havana, and that's what, it says, there's sisters across the gulf. I think for Mobileans that have paid attention, there are historical ties between the City of Mobile and Havana, and Havana is our sister city. This goes back to the McDowell time when we really established that relationship. This book, the writing of this book was been supported by the City of Mobile, Mobile County, and the Society Mobile La Habana, and, which is the official sister city organization. Our very own John Sledge was a city employee, was one of the co-authors along with Alicia Garcia Santana. They've done extensive research to make sure that it's historically factual, but it's not only is it historically factual, they had Chip Cooper, who's a noted photographer, as well as a Cuban, Julio Larmendi, I think, do the photographs. So it's a beautiful coffee table book, but also very factual, and you can buy it at the Haunted Bookshop, or it's available online through the University of Alabama Press and at Amazon. So I'd encourage you to get a copy of it. So, Mr. President, that would conclude my remarks.
Adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Agenda's adopted.
Appeals. We have requests for waivers at 16 Sims Avenue on October 26th from 7:30 until 10:00 PM, at 57 North Clayborne Street on October 27th from 2:00 until 8:00 PM, at 2068 Benicia Road on October 26th from 6:00 to 11:00 PM, at 4901 Ziegler Boulevard on October 12th from 9:00 AM until 4:00 PM, and at Langham Park on October 19th from 10:00 AM until 2:00 PM.
So moved.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Appeal passes.
Public hearings. Today is the public hearing to fix cause for demolition of the structure at 1254 Aslava Lane.
This opened up the public hearing for this particular said item. Is anyone present that would like to address the council on this item? If not, this public hearing is closed.
Public hearing to consider assenting to the vacation of a portion of right-of-way located on Ellis Avenue.
This opened up the public hearing for this particular said item. Is anyone present that would like to address the council on this item, just so you may come out to the podium, must state in your name. If not, this public hearing is closed.
Presentation of applications to the council, Dexter Sutton.
Mr. Sutton, present. Madam Clerk?
Apostle Velania Green.
Apostle Velania Green, 603 Delaware Street, Mobile, Alabama, Down the Bay Community. I bring you greetings today. Mayor's office, good morning, thank you for participating, counsel in the women in leadership that are represented here today, and the ones that's represented in spirit and in truth. I come before you today to speak with you about 600 South Bay U Street. These are some senior citizen apartments, and I've been begging and pleading for them to be maintained, and nothing has happened. The grass in the senior citizen apartments are up to their needs. I have to beg and plead for the grass to be cut so the elderly people can function coming in and out that apartment without getting snake bitten and be able to go back and forth to the grocery store, which is right there on Broad Greers and the checkers' change, North-South Checkers' Change, Mr. Cuida Powell Green. Anyway, my question is, why do I have to keep coming before council asking for help for these people? Do we not serve the disprivilege? Do we not serve the poor and the needy? Where are we as a city? And Florida should certainly be an example to us today with the storm that's going on, with a raging storm. That could be us. That could be us. So what I'm asking you is, why do I have to come before you to fight for the old people to be able to go down the sidewalk and not have to walk in the street because of the debris, the trash, and the bushes because the apartment complex does not do anything? How do we keep going through this? And why isn't it addressed? Is it because Airbus owns them and we look the other way and we play pretend for the rich? Or is it we're misguided and we have no care for the poor? Is that what it is? So I ask you today, I implore you to get up and do something. You got the same thing with South Bay. I traveled that street to make sure I wasn't falsely accusing anybody. I did the same thing that those elderly people did. I walked down New Jersey Street to the Greers, to the checkers' change, just to have the experience to make sure nobody was lying when they keep calling, asking me to get them help. And I had to walk in the street. I did it two weeks, one on one week and one on another. So I'm going to give you a solution to your problem. Why can't Mr. Wood and Mr. Linder get together and write a contract where ensure landlords not to be slumlords?
Apostle Green, yeah, thank you so much, Apostle Green.
Can I get another minute to finish, please?
Does anyone grant, Ms. Green, I'll ask a minute.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Okay. What I was asking was, make the landlords do a contract promising that they're not going to be slumlords. They're not going to be slumlords, and that they're going to do monthly inspections on their apartments, on their tenants. That's where the manager is policing, making sure drugs are not going on in the tenant's apartments, that they're not tearing up the apartment complex, that they are being model citizens, and we're holding the landlord and the tenant responsible for their lifestyle and their living. So that's what I ask you today is, put a contract, then you don't have to keep going through this and going through this, and then having people like me, they really care about their community, come up and speak about it because we can hold their feet to the fire.
Apostle Green, thank you so much for coming down. I have a question for you. Did you call 311 and report that?
Yes, I've called many times, and they, they gave me the answer. Yes, I've called many times. And they gave me the answer why I keep going through this.
Did you have your SRO number?
Yes, I do.
Did you? You have it on you?
I can pull it up because I've got it on email.
Please pull it up and give it to Ms. Brown, Keisha Brown, at the end of this meeting. And I personally want to follow up on that. Just, okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Madam Clerk.
Uh, Mr. President?
Uh, Ms. Gregory.
Yeah. It's okay. I'm, you don't need to. I've got a question for David. You've heard all of this, and they've sent it into three-one-one. I mean, it's obviously some sort of private property issue with the weeds and things in front of the building. So when it comes to the three-one-one, I mean, that's how we go through. Even if somebody calls me with the problem, I have to turn it into three-one-one as well so that the correct departments can take care of these things. So David, for whatever you can address, would you mind?
Yeah, just to follow up.
Yeah.
We are based on
Come closer to them. Just come closer.
Three-one-one calls, we do respond.
Yeah.
I need to check specifically at this location to find out where we're at. But as I recall, we serve notice and the apartment complex complies. So it's a revolving
It's a revolving thing. They comply, then it gets bad, and they
We serve notice, they comply.
Right.
But I do need to check on the status of the litter, possibly, at the dumpsters, but also the high grass and weeds that was reported here today.
This sounds like something that, as our folks go through their inspections in different parts of the city, the ones that are in that area probably need to make a frequent check as they go by whether there's a three-one-one call or not because it is a constant issue there. That's just a suggestion.
Mr. Dave, before you take your seat, I think Councilman Carroll has something. But just for the citizens who would know this answer, once the call is first made, what is the timeframe before even considering getting cut? I mean, is it
It's much more difficult to hold their feet to the fire. But our job really is to get the property owners to take responsibility before the city has to come in and do anything. And the city doesn't necessarily come in and cut everybody's grass. That's just not what we're about.
Mr. President, Mr. Carroll.
Jenny hit on all the most important things. The only other thing that's left out is owner-occupied properties. If there's an owner-occupied property where the owner lives in it and there is a weed abatement issue, then it's not very much we can do to attack or to have an owner address his own property when he's living in it. It's the same thing with nuisance abatement. Half of the roof could be caving in on a piece of property. But if it's occupied and someone's living in it, it's not very much we can do there. Could you explain?
Just a quick follow-up. I think you're correct that these programs of nuisance abatement are designed for properties with no owner that's responsibly active maintaining the property. If someone's living in the house, no, we don't want to demolish it. That is not something that we want to do. It's a program that we have internally. We are not going to do that. And no, we don't go after, with weed abatement, someone that lives and maintains their property. That is something we don't want to do. That's the responsibility of the property owner. And that's why we have the Environmental Court with that notice, the ten days, and then follow it up with municipal fence ticket.
Mr. President?
Uh, Mr. Penn.
Thank you, Mr. President. And David, just a couple questions. I know you kind of talked about the process and that it could go to two to three months after that. Is that with the weed is that dealing, that state law that says how long?
Yes, the initial legislation is based on state law. That's applied to the city, the city code, and we do follow that. With weed abatement that you're specifically answering or asking about, there's two programs. One, where we have not had this property before, and we do have to go before counsel for notification purposes. But also timeframe for counsel to declare the public nuisance, giving the property owner thirty days to cut the grass. And then you give us authority after thirty days, if the grass has not been cut, to go onto that property and cut the grass through a contractor. That is what we're, the first process. That could take up to three months to go through all these steps to get it before counsel declared a public nuisance, wait thirty days for them to cut, come back, authorize us to go on the property, get a contractor, cut the grass, and then like the two we see today, assess the cost to the individual property owner. The other process is what's called repeat weedling. And you do see that on occasion. That is an administrative process that the state has allowed us to do. Faster process. If the first process has occurred within thirty-six months, three years, we have the ability to fast-track. We don't advertise. We send a letter to the owner based on the tax assessor within eleven days. We're out there with a contractor, in theory, it could be fifteen, twenty days, to cut the grass through the repeat weedling. That is authorized by the state, and we haven't got that process. So it all depends on where that property falls in with the weed abatement. Has it been originally processed through counsel declaring a public nuisance within thirty-six months? If it has, then we can fast-track it through repeat weedling. If not, we do have to come back. And it takes a little bit longer. That's why you're seeing some of the properties in your district take a little bit longer than others to get cut through the weed abatement process.
Okay, that makes sense. And I agree. I mean, we've been having challenges in my area, you know, with different areas, making sure that they maintain their property. But if we can figure this out to speed up the process, I like the fast track. That would be great. But we, thank you for everything you do.
You're welcome. And just a follow-up. And everybody knows this, hey, if your constituents have a problem, call three-one-one so we can get a record of it.
Just to piggyback behind you, Councilman Penn, you're lucky.
My name is David Preston. This is Taylor Volts, the Director of the Historic Oakley House Museum. I am, I am an author of two books. One is Unknown Soldier of World War I. It is a novel that portrays the Alabama One-Sixty-Seventh National Guards Service in World War I. And eighteen-twenty-eight, a novel that portrays the presidential election of eighteen-twenty-eight. That if you've heard this before, stop me. But it portrays the eighteen-twenty-eight election, which was a rematch between the previous two candidates with accusations of stolen elections, fake news, and political corruption. Like I said, stop me if you've heard this before. But I'm here today to invite each and every one of you, including the mayor, every one of you council members, and the general public to attend our first-ever Oakley Literary Lawn Party at the Historic Oakley House this Saturday, October twelfth, from eleven to four. I am helping organize the event, along with Taylor and her staff. It is a fundraiser to support the museum and the Historic Mobile Preservation Society. We're going to have about twenty-five, around twenty-five authors that are going to be signing and selling copies of their books, including me. And we're going to have authors that are going to be speaking about the literary history of Mobile and the process of writing books and, you know, just literature in general. There'll be tours available of the house as well to learn about the history of the Oakley House as well as the history of Mobile. I hear rumors that the mayor is planning on attending dressed as his favorite Harry Potter character, Hermione. Now, I told that joke to the mayor about a month ago, and he told me that he didn't have any clue who Hermione was. All I'll say is this, Mr. Mayor, if you can make yourself look like Hermione, you definitely will be, would be a wizard because that's the young female witch of the book. And with your permission, Mr. President, I would like Ms. Volts here to say a few words if she has anything to say.
I can say something real quick and while we have a minute left. Again, I'm Taylor Volts. I'm the Director of the Historic Mobile Preservation Society in the Historic Oakley House. I know a lot of you already. But this is our first annual Literary Lawn Party. We're very, very excited about this. We partner a lot with local authors, and this is our first opportunity to invite them to really give back to the community. So I hope if you are free Saturday from eleven to four, please come by the Oakley House. It's open to the public for free, and we'd love to see you there. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Carroll.
Have you guys sent this out to the Oakley Garden community and to their neighborhood notification group?
I haven't put it on the Facebook group. I did send it to the president of the neighborhood group, but I'll put it on the Facebook page, too.
Okay, if you would also send me a PDF of it, and I'll add it to the
I can do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
CIP resolutions held over. Zero-one, nine thirty-six, authorize agreement with J. For field improvements at Mem's Park. Zero-one, nine thirty-seven, authorize agreement with P.L. Russell for structural retaining wall and grading improvements at Langham Park.
So moved.
Properly moved and second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Resolutions held over. Zero-eight, nine thirty-eight, nine forty, and nine forty-one are approving purchase orders to Dana Safety Supply for upfitting Chevrolet Tahos and Ford pickup trucks, to Long Lewis Ford of the Shoals for twenty-twenty-five Ford Escape, and to Vulcan Construction Materials for limestone base for Hotel Street Parking. Zero-nine, nine forty-two, transfer funds from Capital Project Gulf Coast Tech Center Intelligence to Project MCPs Student Safety Analyst to be used to support a student safety analyst. Thirteen, nine forty-three, authorize change order number one with John G. Walton Construction Company for twenty-eighteen Pago North McGregor Avenue reconstruction. Twenty-one, nine forty-four, authorize contract with McCory and Williams for Shipyard Road boat launch. Twenty-one, seven forty-eight, twenty-twenty-four, to reflect the cost share is between the city and the Federal Highway Administration. Thirty-one, nine forty-six, authorize the mayor to apply, accept, and receive a grant from the South Alabama Regional Planning Commission for the fiscal year twenty-five Transportation Alternative Grant Program.
So moved.
Second.
Properly moved and second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Consent resolution is being introduced. Thirty-seven, nine forty-nine through fifty-eight, nine fifty-four.
Moved to waive the rules for immediate consideration of the resolutions as read.
Properly moved and second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Rules waived.
Thirty-seven, nine forty-nine, nine fifty, and nine fifty-one are recommending approval to the ABC Board for issuance to Dave and Buster's on East I-Sixty-Five Service Road South for issuance of a retail beer Table Wine Off Premises Only license to LG Quick Stop on Azelia Road and for issuance of a retail beer Table Wine Off Premises Only license to University Chevron on Ziegler Boulevard. Forty, nine fifty-two, fixed cost for demolition of the structure at twelve-fifty-four Aslava Lane. Fifty-eight, nine fifty-three, and nine fifty-four are assessing costs for removal of weeds, repeat weedling group seventy-seven and weedling group sixteen fifty-eight.
So moved.
Second.
Properly moved and second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Resolutions being introduced. Zero-eight, nine fifty-five through sixty, nine sixty-four.
Per council rules, these resolutions will be laid over for one week.
Call for public hearings. Forty-one, nine sixty-five, call for public hearing to consider the modification of a previously approved planning approval for property located at One Hardwood Lane, scheduled for November twelfth. Forty-one, nine sixty-six, call for public hearing to consider modification of a previously approved planned unit development for the property at One Hardwood Lane, scheduled for November twelfth. Forty-one, nine sixty-seven, call for public hearing to consider rezoning property located at sixty-nine fifty Moffett Road from LB-two to R-one, scheduled for November twelfth. Forty-one, nine sixty-eight, call for public hearing to determine whether the downtown Mobile Business Improvement District should be continued, modified, or terminated, scheduled for October twenty-ninth.
So moved.
Second. Properly moved and second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Public hearings called.
Announcements.
District Four, Councilman Reynolds.
No announcements.
District One, Councilman Penn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm just the Trent Garden Community Meeting Tuesday, October the twenty-second, six P.M. at the Dots Community Center. We invite everyone to come out, and we're going to receive some community updates. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Penn. District Two, Councilman Carroll.
No announcements, Mr. President.
District Six, Councilman Woods.
No announcements, Mr. President.
District Seven, Vice President Gregory.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Just for anyone who may not, for elementary through high school students, should be a really terrific event. I've been asked to speak a little bit, so I will be there along with a lot of kids and adults, and it is a great way to learn more about what your fire department does. So I invite everyone to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Gregory. And to the citizens of District Three, I would like to say to the citizens and to my colleagues, on last week, I had experience of unexpected death of my brother, LaBaron Small, and I was, had been flooded with many phone calls and symphonies and cars and food and business and et cetera. And I'd like to say thank you on behalf of myself and my family. I really do appreciate it. Being a funeral director, I deal with this every day, but when you're on the other side of the table, it feels a little different. But again, I do appreciate everything that everyone has done for myself and my family. And one person I would like to recognize is a person that's been with me since day one, since I've been on this council, and had been a very supporter of me. And I told her this morning, she's like a grandmother to me. I have lost my grandparents at an early age, but since I've been on this council, she has been a very good supporter of mine, and even through the death of my brother, she's been right there with me. And I'd like to recognize Ms. Thelma Thrash, my grandmother, I would say. Thank you so much for everything that you do for me and also District Three. She's a very, very great supporter of District Three. And also to announce some community meetings starting next week. So District Three, keep your ears and eyes open for those meetings. Anything from the administration?
Motion to adjourn.
Well, one second, one second.
I do have, Mr. President, Madam Clerk, I need to make a declaration for an executive session. My name is Ricardo Woods. I'm the city attorney. I'm licensed to practice law in the state of Alabama. At this time, I'll make the declaration that council may need to go into to discuss the lease and or sale of certain property owned by the governing body and the governing entity. And I'd ask for a roll called vote by the clerk and ask that we not reconvene after the closing of the session.
So moved.
Second. Properly moved and second in discussion. Madam Clerk?
President Small?
Yes.
Vice President Gregory?
Yes.
Councilmember Penn?
Yes.
Councilmember Carroll?
Yes.
Councilmember Reynolds?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Okay, we will not convene.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
No, no, no. No, no, no need, no need. Just go into session.